Good evening. Now going to our regularly scheduled council meeting. If you have a cell phone, we ask that you put it on silent, mute, or off at this time. We'll be led in prayer by our city clerk followed by the pledge of the.
God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed. Assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen.
Amen.
I. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, in the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
President.
West.
President.
Jacobs. Mayor Kirkland.
President. Move with the approval minutes.
So moved.
I second.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
This time we open up the mic of the phone lines for public comments. If you have a public comment, we ask that you would, as directed by our city solicitor, dial in or email your comments.
The call in number is six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five one.
Hearing of receiving no public comments. Madam Clerk.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to prepare the specifications for the advertisement for the following bid, traffic signal maintenance. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned bid.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Educational Data Systems Incorporated entered into a lease agreement with the city of Chester dated November seventh, two thousand two for the lease of approximately two thousand six hundred and eighty-four plus or minus square feet of space at the premise known as one sixty East Seventh Street. And whereas amendment number one to the lease expanded the leased space to include an additional four thousand twenty-three square feet for a term to coincide with the existing lease and subject to the terms and conditions of existing lease. And whereas amendment number two to the lease allowed for the temporary lease of an additional two thousand three hundred and eighty-two square feet of usable space and as is conditioned, beginning October first, two thousand seventeen and ending November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to execute an amendment to the current lease agreement between the city of Chester and Educational Data Systems Incorporated for the lease of space on the first floor consisting of approximately eight thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet rentable space and the lease of additional space on the first floor consisting of approximately one thousand three hundred and twenty square feet pursuant to the outlined terms and conditions.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby amend the resolution passed by Chester City Council on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty to read as follows. That it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the sum of nineteen thousand sixty dollars to Gregory Tucker, which represents escrow refund for the repair of damages sustained to the property located at two thirty East Twenty-Second Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas by virtue of a resolution adopted July twenty-fourth, two thousand two, the council of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, declare its intent to follow the schedules and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the municipal records manual. And whereas in accordance with Act four twenty-eight of nineteen sixty-eight, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the council of the city of Chester. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited municipal records manual, hereby ratifies the authorization of the disposition of the following public records. Department of Public Affairs Solicitor's Office, purchase orders two thousand through two thousand nine, purchase contracts nineteen ninety-six through two thousand two, and resolution requests two thousand four through two thousand eight.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Dr. Lewis M. Hunt Irving as a member of the Chester City Board of Health to replace Dr. Christopher Hanum, term to expire in accordance with fifty-three P.S. section three seven three zero two.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? A comment from myself, just want to thank Dr. Christopher Hanum for all his service on our health board, his leadership and his expertise and dedication to that board was second to none. We appreciate all the hard work and effort that he put into it. And we salute him as he moves forward in another endeavor, working with one of our partners here in the city of Chester. Just want to thank you. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to submit an application to the Delaware County Demolition Program Blighted Property Demolition Fund to obtain funds for the demolition of the following properties. Number one, six twenty-nine West Sixth Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero seven dash zero zero three six seven dash zero zero. Number two, five hundred Curling Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero seven dash zero one three five five dash zero zero. Number three, five oh two Curling Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero seven dash zero one three five six dash zero zero. Number four, two eleven Ivy Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero eight dash zero zero eight zero three dash zero one. Number five, two thirteen Ivy Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero eight dash zero zero eight one one dash zero zero. Number six, twenty-two fifteen West Third Street, folio number forty-nine dash ten dash zero zero two five five dash zero zero. Number seven, three hundred Woodrow Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero six dash zero one two three five dash zero zero. And number eight, three oh two Woodrow Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero six dash zero one two three six dash zero zero. Further, it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve an order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and as shown on expenditure approval list dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, attached hereto and made a part thereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Bill number four, first reading was on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Ordinance number four of twenty twenty and ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, creating new article nine twenty-four entitled "Street Cleaning" to establish no parking street cleaning zones throughout the city of Chester and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number four on its last and final reading.
I second that we pass bill number four on its last and final reading.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Do have bid openings, and let me just double check. Everybody have a bid sheet? It's supposed to be on the back. First bid opening is going to be for Berry Bridge Park Dock upgrades. First company is Gessler Construction Company, five six five East St. Andrews Drive, Media, PA, one nine zero six three. Total amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. With a ten percent bid bond. Next company is Mid-Atlantic Marine, thirteen West Susquehanna Drive, Little A Harbor, New Jersey, zero eight, zero eight, seven. They have a ten percent bid bond. Their total amount is forty-nine thousand dollars. Okay. Let me just make sure. That's what it is. Next set of bids that will be opened will be for Highland Avenue and Township Line Road Traffic Signal Upgrades. First company, Charles A. Higgins and Sons Incorporated, PO Box six forty-seven, Media, PA, one nine zero six three. They have a ten percent bid bond. Price ninety-four thousand, sixty dollars. Give me one moment, say it again.
There's an alternate bid for that too.
Okay, because, let's see. And I'm not even sure if that's the right, because it's a page in here with two amounts. So both all these is going to have two different things?
For this bid, yes. Yes, and there's the base bid and then there's an alternate.
All right, so let me go back and clarify. There's a base bid of ninety-four thousand, sixty dollars. And then there's an alternate of fourteen thousand, thirty-four dollars. Next company, Lenai Electric Corporation, ten twenty Andrew Drive, West Chester, PA, one nine three eight zero. Their base bid is ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And their alternate is twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. With a ten percent bid bond. Last bid openings will be for Memorial Park Football Field Lighting Project. First company is Ford Brothers Electrical Company Incorporated, four thirteen West Amalosa Land or Amisland Road, Norwood, PA, one nine zero seven four. They have a ten percent bid bond. Price of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Next company, G.A. Vitri Incorporated, Electrical Construction, one oh five Independence Way, Coatesville, PA, one nine three two zero. They have a ten percent bid bond. Their price is ninety-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Next company, KC Electric, three oh eight East Twentieth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Cashier's check, six thousand dollars. And their price is sixty thousand dollars. Next company, Lenai Electric Corporation, ten twenty Andrew Drive, West Chester, PA, one nine three eight zero. Their price is one hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars. Ten percent bid bond. Last company is Philip Brothers Electrical Contractors, two thirty-five Sweet Spring Road, Glenbor, PA, one nine three four three. Their price is ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Ten percent bid bond. They are all the bid openings I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Michael, would you be able to, not at this time, because I'm looking at these numbers for both the Memorial Park Football Field and the Berry Bridge Park Dock. There's some huge gaps in some of those numbers. But before, you know, we.
I'll make sure I review the bids and provide a proper analysis.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time we open up the phone lines and email lines for public comments. Solicitor, do you have any?
Phone line is six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five one.
I just want to give an update. Over the pandemic, we were speaking about the micro small business grant opportunity. I'm proud to say that we've been able to fund, I believe, nineteen businesses throughout the city of Chester, has been approved for funding, for financial assistance. So a good amount of those businesses will be receiving the funds very soon. I'm sure they will be appreciative of it. And it's something that we're very proud of, that we're able to assist the businesses throughout this pandemic process. Also, right now currently, the city of Chester is given a, not given away, but you have to qualify for, but rental and utility assistance, financial assistance for renters in the city of Chester is not for homeowners, unfortunately. There are other financial assistance mechanisms out there throughout the county for homeowners, but the city of Chester has a rental assistance and utility assistance program being ran through Community Action Agency. There, we have been posting this on our social media and our websites. We can find the website and the phone number who you have to reach out to to schedule an appointment to see if you qualify or how you can get, fill out that application. And the last thing I'll speak about is over the past year, year and a half, the city of Chester, the Waterfront Alliance, and many other stakeholders and entities, Delaware County, State Representative's Office have been speaking with consultants and developers about the Chester Waterfront Master Plan Presentation. Next week on September fifteenth, Tuesday, from six PM to seven PM, there will be a Zoom meeting where we, we would like the community and whomever believe that they have some stake in our city of Chester, our waterfront, to join us on our presentation where the consultants will be able to present the study that they've been able to come up with. The study will speak a little bit of what businesses will be able to sustain here in the city of Chester and Delaware County, what our residents are looking for, whether it's recreational uses, whether it's mixed-use properties for business and residential living assistance, residential living as well. So make sure that September fifteenth from six PM to seven PM, that you can join us on our Zoom meeting, where we'll be able to present that information. We've had roughly about two or three over the past year and a half meetings with the community to hear about what the community wants. And this is the first opportunity for you all to see that your vision may be able to come to fruition, at least within the plan and the project. So I won't read out the entire Zoom URL or the link, but on our city of Chester website and on our social media and Facebook pages, we have been uploading or posting that information for about a week or two now. So I'm sure we'll continue to share it as we lead up to next Tuesday. Thank you.
Yeah, I have the time.
Yes, sure, it's, again, it's Tuesday, September fifteenth, from six PM to seven PM. And it's going to be on a Zoom where the consultants will present the information that they've been able to come up with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Smith, do you want to give us an update while we're waiting on the partnership and the beginning of testing today, the coronavirus testing? Microphone, please. Just a little update on how it went today and the naming of our partners. Microphone, please. Take your time, we'll be all night. You used to move a little faster than that, right?
Okay, yes, good evening, everyone. For the first day, it went very well. I don't have the actual numbers, but they tell me it's close to a hundred and fifteen people were tested for the COVID today. So stay tuned tomorrow. If the weather is not bad, we will be here from nine AM to five PM. And we'll be here from Monday, Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the next four weeks. So everyone needs to get tested in the community because we want to have a safe and healthy community.
Could you recognize our partners?
United Healthcare Services is the lead on this particular initiative.
Thank you. Want to thank United Healthcare. This is a free opportunity, a free test for all of our residents. It'll be going on for the next four weeks. And we encourage you to come out. I want to thank all the members of council who, along with myself, who went through the testing as well. And we're trying to make sure that we can get as many persons here in City Hall tested as possible. So we want to thank all of them. Councilwoman Williams, you want to talk about Census?
Well, we both do.
I'm going to get to you, but since you're there.
First of all, I'd just like to commend Councilwoman Williams. She's been working tirelessly for the past few months with the Census Bureau. She's been working tirelessly for the past few months with the Census Bureau, and going out and to different areas, trying to encourage people to give their information, so that we can have a good showing in Chester. I think our numbers have been a little bit low. But yesterday and today, and we'll be out all week, going around to different developments. We were at William Penn yesterday, and also Chester Apartments. And then today, we went to the Bennett Homes, which is a large area. I got plenty of exercise today. And also the, what was the other development?
We did the William Penn.
Daniel Scott, yes.
William Penn, Chester Apartments. The Bennett, Martin Luther King, and Chatham Estates.
Right, but we just want to encourage everybody, we just want to encourage everyone to participate in the census. The information, it's vital to our city, it's vital to our county and state. And based on the numbers that we're able to get, we can get monies for our schools, roads, community centers, different things that we would need as a city for our community members. So it's very important that we all participate in the census taking. So Councilwoman, thank you so much for all of your efforts, and I really have enjoyed working with you this week, I really have.
I would like to say to all the parents and to everyone in the community, right now, we need your help. For the schools. My biggest thing right now is for our children. What are we going to leave our children? What are we here to do for our children? I definitely need everyone in these households to fill out those censuses, because they are very detrimental to our city. And I appreciate it very much. If you take time out of your busy schedule, you can either call us, or the mailers have already been out. So I'm telling y'all tonight, I ain't too proud to beg when it come to my city and my children. I need that census, and I want it to rise, okay? City of Chester, this is one time I'm asking you to please give me what I need. Thank you so very much, and have a nice evening.
All right, I heard it. Thank, yes, Counsel.
Mayor, you mentioned the city employees. And everybody knows that COVID testing is not mandatory. But the majority of people that that notice went out to today from City Hall, most of City Hall people volunteered to do their COVID testing. The other thing I'd like to mention, going back to resolution five, the appointment of on the Health Board, Dr. Lewis M. Hunt Irvin. Mayor, you exactly right, Dr. Handem served for the time that he did serve on that board spectacularly. And I wish him well, too. But I also want to welcome Dr. Lewis M. Hunt Irvin for taking up the banner. And I think he's going to be doing great things. The second resolution, I mean, the next resolution I want to talk about is the number six, the Delaware County Demolition Program. And I just want to say that if you, I mean, the city clerk ran off all those addresses. There were eight. Before this program got started, that money came from the city CGBG money. And I think we're still using that, Mike, aren't we? So this is like a supplement. So we're going at light speed and getting rid of some of the some of the buildings around here in Chester that need to be taken down. And Mike should get a compliment for that. Because he works heavily with the county in that program.
Thank you. All right. For what? Anyway. At this time, we're going to have our presentation by our city engineer. Whichever presentation you're going to bring forth.
Give me a minute, I'm going to stop the tape, because that was part of delivery.
That was part of delivery. Oh, just to, I could speak into the microphone. Just to brief counsel, so we just received the recent winter service, I should keep my mask on. We just received the recent Winter Services Agreement from Penn Dot. This year, I wanted to brief counsel on it, because with the amount of employees that we have, and given the amount of Penn Dot roads that we have to maintain, we are considering not entering into the agreement this year due to the amount of manpower that we have in our Highway Department. So for example, if we were to get a snowstorm in the winter months, we would not only have to take care of our roads, as you know, but some of the Penn Dot roads. So internally, in the Highway Department, we had a meeting, and it's ultimately a council decision, if we want to enter in that agreement. Keep in mind, we do get reimbursed a certain amount based on miles of roads that we maintain in the winter months. And basically, we're considering this year, maybe we should forego it, given the amount of manpower that we have in the Highway Department. I think we're down to, I think, four full-time and seven part-time employees, which, doing that and handling some of the Penn Dot roads, could be burdensome in the winter months. So something we want to keep in mind, even doing our regular roads, with the amount of manpower we have, could be difficult, depending on the severity of the storm.
I think we have less than that in terms of employees, and it would be very difficult.
I think I'm counting Mark and Rocky.
Yeah, it would be very difficult for us to do our roads throughout the city, as well as the state roads. It would be a burden on the department.
So if you'd like, I could have the conversation with the state, coordinate with them, and let them know what we're considering, because I think they would be expecting us to enter into it this year. But this year, as you know, is an odd year with COVID-nineteen pandemic, and the amount of staff that we have from versus what we regularly have in the Highway Department.
And we also have to have, you might want to make sure we have that conversation with the receiver as well, because of the financial possibility of the financial impact, or lack thereof, with calls, if we are to proceed with the contract or not to proceed with the contract.
Yes.
Okay.
But that was my presentation, thank you.
Thank you so much. I thought you were going to tell me you were having another baby. Tell you come back. Not this time. Are there any calls, Mrs. Solicitor?
No calls, Your Honor.
Are there any comments, questions from?
I'd just like to thank the, our constituents, too, here in the city, for their patience with the numerous trash issues that we've been experiencing. Our vendors had a hard time with staffing issues. The city, the Highway Department, were having concerns with staffing and what have you. So there's been some great delays on bulk trash pickup and yard waste and what have you. And then our vendor, our trash vendor, has been behind. But this week, it seems as though they're starting to catch up some. They still have a little ways to go, but thank you, everyone here in the City of Chester, for your patience.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, too, would like to thank them for their patience as well. Here ain't no further comments. This council meeting is now adjourned.